Good evening. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Fort Wayne Community Schools Board of School Trustees Meeting. We ask those of you who are in attendance here tonight to stand and join with us as we recite our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Steve, introduction members.
Good evening. My name is Steve Corona and I represent the folks from the 5th District.
Good evening. I'm Glenna Yale from the 2nd District.
And I'm Becky Hill from the 3rd District.
Julie Hollingsworth from District 1.
Ann Duff, District at Large.
Jordan Lebomoff, the 4th District.
And my name is Mark Chiaquinta. I'm an at-large member of the school board. Seated to my left is Barb Trout, the Secretary to the Board, as well as Dr. Wendy Robinson, our Superintendent. Good evening Wendy and Barb. We have a pretty short agenda tonight. The Board will be working at a work session on Wednesday, Dr. Robinson? And so, the public is more than welcome to join us on the second floor of the Growl Administration Building for our work session. The topic Wednesday is...
It's the 12-month plan of our secondary and elementary direct assistance superintendents and how that plan is supported by all the academic and support departments. So it's how we're operating to make sure that what the schools have to do in the classroom gets supported consistently across the district.
And that's really important because it keeps the Board apprised of progress in the classroom as well as the overarching balance scorecard that, I should say, those plans tie into the balance scorecard. So as we begin reviewing the balance scorecard, it really helps to understand the school improvement plans, which are the indicators of how well we're doing at both elementary and middle and high schools. So, thank you, and we'll look forward to that on Wednesday. As I mentioned, the agendas, the business meeting tonight should go quickly. We move directly to the consent agenda at item 4, which tonight consists of the approval of the minutes from our November 14th meeting, the approval of vouchers and payroll, as well as the personnel report. And Dr. Robinson, is there anybody on the personnel report who's here tonight that you wanted to introduce?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. So with that, we'll entertain a motion in a second.
Can I move approval?
Thank you, Julie.
Second.
Becky, thank you for the second. So there's a motion in a second for the approval of tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? So carried. Under new business, there's only one item, and it is a recommendation that the Board approve the application for and the acceptance of, the High Ability Grant for 2016-17. We often refer to that as gifted and talented, from the Indiana Department of Education in the amount of $147,897. The information Dr. Robinson provided to us states that the state does provide non-competitive funds for districts to address the learning needs of high-ability students, and those are used to provide assessments and other tools to aid in the identification of high-ability students. It also provides the appropriate education for those who are so identified through differentiated services and program options, and continues to provide curriculum coordination to train teachers on the characteristics and educational needs of high-ability students. We don't want them walking around and not know that they're there, so we train the teachers to understand where somebody might have talent that ought to be recognized and worked with. Currently, high-ability services are delivered through the efforts of classroom teachers. The overall program is coordinated by Amelia Flagler, Curriculum Coordinator in Academic Services. And so, Dr. Robinson, I mean, this is a non-competitive grant, so it's there through the state, through the, through what I assume is probably some legislation that was passed somewhere along the line. So, we take that money. That is certainly, you may want to address this, not to suggest that we don't think all of our students have talents, but somebody along the line thought it was important to allocate funding for this, and we would be crazy not to apply for it because it's allocated based on number of students, correct?
It is, and part of it, and Amelia, you could probably correct me if that's not how it's allocated, but I think the bigger issue, and this is a conversation I've had with several Board members, if you look at the amount of money it is, we're grateful for every penny we get, but it pretty much just pays for somebody to help coordinate the activities. Once again, classroom teachers are given the burden of the different ranges of students they have within their classroom. And one of the things we've tried to do as a district, it's a little bit easier at middle school and high school because you can get kids into higher-level classes, you can have them going to the universities. But unfortunately, if you look at what we do at elementary school, the differentiation and the ability to have students who are high-ability, that, it's a constant struggle because if you have a classroom full of students, they're probably not all high-ability in the same way. And so what we are looking at in our district is, yes, we do the testing because that's a part of what the state expects, but you have to have the philosophy that you stretch all kids and not just give this minimum education. So this really is kind of a misnomer, and part of our conversations is you just don't set this bottom-shelf thinking, you know, that you don't have kids of high-ability.
And if I could take a crack at that, I mean, what I hear you saying is that it's really important that every child learn to his or her potential. So, the potential for every student is high. That is, in fact, what do they call it? Gifted and talented. If I'm, if I am learning at the full range of my ability, then I would say that that's being gifted because very few of us, I think, ever really stretched that far. So it's our, it's our goal to stretch every student to that point, and if we do that and differentiate in a way that achieves that goal, then it seems to me we've met the goal of this grant. So, I mean, I'm glad to hear you say that, I really am. And I, and I think all too often, you know, we, we're so fortunate, based on what you've done with curriculum, because we have students who, whose potential takes them outside our classrooms, is your point. So when that is recognized, we send them to IPFW and other, so that they can get those college courses, which is terrific, so. Are there other questions about this grant?
I just want to ask, how many students are we talking about as, that we've identified? Like, what percentage of our students? And then, the second part of my question is, of the ones in elementary, I guess, at middle and high school, we do a better job, but at the elementary level, what do extra ways do we challenge those students? Each, is it left up to each teacher, or are they pulled aside in some way?
Certainly. Roughly 9% of our student population is identified as either high-ability in English Language Arts, in the area of math, or in both areas. With regards to supports for high-ability students, professional learning is done with buildings and with teachers in order for them to identify the characteristics of high-ability students and to be able to support those students appropriately with appropriate instructional strategies. In addition, we have academic Super Bowls, as well as Spell Bowl and Math Bowl through the Indiana Association of School Principals. That is an opportunity for students.
But they are kept with their grade and they are taught from the same curriculum, is that true?
They're taught from, it's differentiated, and when we say, when the curriculum is differentiated, we meet the needs of the students where they are at to provide them rigorous instruction that meets their needs. So not providing more, but providing different material that meets their needs based on where they're at.
Sort of supplementing?
Yes.
Okay, so if someone's reading at a 5th grade level, but they're in 3rd grade, they wouldn't be promoted to 5th grade, they would just be supplemented?
That's correct.
At their current grade level, correct? Okay.
Well, it, and part of it is, the reason I made the statement I made, is every single child who is identified, we need to approach them a little bit differently. So a lot of districts will pull kids out that have been identified and they're in a separate class. Well, some of the kids who are identified as, in our high-ability, have musical talents. It's not all just academic. And so one of the philosophies we're trying to get people to see is, you don't treat everybody the same way just because they have this label. It's in our Tier 3, which is students who need over and above a higher goal, a different reach than everybody normally, you know, Tier 1 is everybody gets it. Tier 2 is they need a little bit more support. Tier 3, sometimes we think about it as special ed kids are in Tier 3, but we actually explain to teachers, kids who are identified need more, and it isn't necessarily, if you've got a 5th grade reader in a 3rd grade class, don't make them go through the 3rd grade basal. You've got to figure out what you do with a 3rd grader. Sometimes, having a 3rd grader in a 5th grade classroom is not socially a good thing for that 3rd grader, but you shouldn't stop their learning. So here's the issue, we have to figure all that out on $147,000, which means we have to constantly be preparing all the people who come in touch with students as to how you keep them challenged. We have an easier way because you can have kids in accelerated classes and taking different things at the secondary level, but constantly at elementary.
But I guess I don't understand why we care about 9% of our students who have been, quote, "identified." I mean, to me, the issue is differentiation, as you said. I mean, if I have a student who enters our school district with severe limitations, and that student is motivated to achieve at his or her potential, then that child is gifted, as far as I'm concerned. And so what I really like about what was said here, and I think moving a nine-year-old into a classroom with, you know, kids who are 12, is, I mean, I remember what it was like to be a Bat Boy on a Little League team, and those were grown men who were 12. I didn't want anything to do with those old guys, because I was eight and a half years old. But to me, you know, what you just said, Dr. Robinson, is just spot-on. By recognizing the potential of every student and calling each and every one of them gifted and talented, because they are, but that doesn't mean we ignore the, those who are learning at a high level. They're differentiated too. So we're pushing everybody up, and that's, that to me is the goal of a successful school system, and that's who we are, and I think we should be very proud of that. So I really hope that this $150,000 is put to use to continue differentiated learning so that every student feels pushed to his or her potential. That, I, and that's what I've read, and that's what I believe, and I, I think we do a darn good job of it.
Now, having said that, we have to stay competitive, because other school systems offer and tout what they do so much differently, but when you actually talk to our parents, and in particular at the high school levels, when we had the choice fair last week, a week before last, lots of parents from that middle school to high school were interested in our programs of study and the kind of more in-depth work that kids can get focused on biomedical and bioengineering. So, all of that said about differentiating, we also have to be realistic, that we're now in a business where others use these terms to say, this is what we do, we pull them out, whereas what we're trying to make sure we do is that we don't assume that a child, because how often do we test students? 3rd grade and...
Kindergarten, 2nd, 5th, and select 8th grade students.
So kindergarten, 2nd, 5th, and 8th.
Can I just say one more thing to Glenna? This is incredibly coincidental, but all eight of my grandkids are gifted and talented. I've identified them as such. All right, thank you. So, good luck, and thanks to you and the rest of the district frankly for continuing to work to differentiate these students and push them. Can we have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. And so, that does conclude our formal agenda tonight, does it not?
That is good.
We're going to go to work, though, Wednesday at noon time, and so again, we welcome everybody to attend our working session.
11:30.
11:30. Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you. 11:30. It's going to be cold Wednesday. It's, I think tomorrow's our last nice day, then it gets cold. But anyway, we'll see you then, and we'll roll up our sleeves and get to work. Are there comments from Board members? Steve?
Two items tonight. This Wednesday, I am reading to a book to Ms. Elizabeth Dickmeyer's 3rd grade class at Lincoln Elementary, and we talked about a book selection. I went out to Barnes &amp; Noble and purchased a book that had caught my attention on the New York Times Bestseller List. It's titled Pox. Pox is a fox. His owner is a young man by the name of Peter, and Peter has to give up Pox. And so the story is that Peter runs away. This is not a picture book, it is 267 pages long. Now, I, my orders are to read a part of it on Wednesday, but I got to tell you, I think I've got to come back and figure out what happens. So I may be back to Miss Dickmeyer's class several times before Christmas break, so I'm doing that this Wednesday, it should be fun. Secondly, I sent to all of the, all of you and Barbara Trout, a note on the fact that the Department of Education had finalized regulations for the new Title 1 law, ESSA. We're not sure if it's going to mean anything. We now have a new education person, or person selected for the Secretary of Education, and it's not really sure whether the regs will actually go into effect and be used, but leading up to that is that I will be attending on behalf of the Board, the National School Board Association's Advocacy Institute, at which time we'll learn more. It's at the end of January, and if any of you have an interest in that, I'd urge you to come with me. I'm planning meetings, as I usually do, it's at the end of January, the last weekend in January. And I've already had some plans made to meet with our members of Congress, them or their education liaison with Senator Donnelly, our new Senator Young, and also with our new Congressman Jim Banks, and just to see what their perspective is on all this, and just to let them know about the good things that we're doing here in Fort Wayne Community Schools. So Advocacy Institute, the last weekend in January, and should be an interesting session.
Glenna, you ought to look.
I would be very interested in going with you...
That'd be great.
...to, to talk with these guys about Fort Wayne Community Schools.
Steve's driving his '72 Volkswagen, but it's good mileage. You really ought to...
No, I would be very interested. Yes, that would be great.
Okay.
There's a good article in the paper today, written by our former Security Director, John Wyker, about Rusty York and how he was one of the very first officers, I think, who was hired to work during the day at Northrop when John was the dean there. And of course, then Rusty ended up working for the district for a few years, and he's getting ready to retire, but, so just want to thank him for, for beginning, and the two of them, both John and Rusty, beginning what I think has been a very, very important partnership between Fort Wayne Community Schools and the Fort Wayne Police Department. And having Dottie Davis here now to take over as our Security Director just, you know, enforces that relationship. You know, when something happens, as it did today at Ohio State, it just reminds you how important it is, and something we here at Fort Wayne Community Schools take very seriously, the safety of our schools and our students and our staff, and, you know, something that we're always very vigilant about. And just also want to extend my thoughts and prayers to Peyton Shambles' family and the Snyder family. She played for the girls' basketball team there at Snyder and taken from us, you know, much too soon. I got a chance to watch her play early this, you know, this basketball season, really, really enjoyed her spirit, her effort. I know she'll be missed, but I think the Snyder Girls Basketball Team is in good hands, and I think those kids as a family will support each other and the family, so just want to extend them my condolences.
I would like to, too, I don't even know Peyton, but I know that it really affected my family, I think probably any Snyder family, especially with teenagers who are driving or who may be driving. It just was so close to home, and it happened on a road that I take my kids to school on every day, and Mrs. Chisely, the principal from Snyder, sent out a very thoughtful letter and asked that we talk to our kids and give them big hugs, and it was just, I thought it was, the letter was well-done, and that's exactly what we did. We talked to our kids, and I know it's hard to convince teenagers that they, they can survive anything and they're resilient, but, you know, it's hard to get them to understand that, you know, this can happen to anybody. So, again, my condolences to the family as well.
Nothing, okay. And Dr. Robinson, any closing remarks?
Just a couple. I would, if Stephen and Glenna are going to talk about ESSA, I'd really like for you to meet with Tracy and Emily Schwartz and Kim Brooks, because they've been keeping track, and we really want to give you some talking points.
That'd be great.
One of the real concerns I have with what is happening, especially at the national level, is this conversation about the block grants, and with some of the conversations about who could become the Secretary of Education that focus on charter voucher without any consideration for what that does to the large majority of students who are in public education. So I applaud, and I hope we continue to be that aggressive, not only at the federal level, but at the state level, because there's a lot of uncertainty, but a lot of the things that we do, even the fact that we get $150,000 for the high-ability, all of that's at risk because we have no idea. So, we can arrange that sooner rather than later and give you some talking points and materials. The other thing is tomorrow's the final assessment panel meeting. I'll be going down tomorrow for that. That's interesting, and I think with the election and what I'm hoping is, it does not turn into another political opportunity that a lot of work and thought that went into some suggestions gets kind of swept under the rug, and we kind of like start at ground zero. So, I promise to behave myself and represent the district well, but I think there's some things that we have to, as a community, really fight hard for, because I'm not sure we're making decisions based on best practice for children. And so I'll make sure that whatever happens tomorrow, I'll kind of report on that. The other thing, a couple of things, the next Board meeting, one of the things we really want to try to do, we have had two absolutely wonderful work sessions on the FACE, all of the different services at FACE, and so Faye was on tap to try to do something tonight. We chose not to rush it, but I would, on December 12th, really like to have a public conversation a little more condensed than ours has been, but I don't think the community knows how many things we have done for that pyramid, the readiness-to-learn side. So that's one thing that we'd like to put on tap. The last is about Peyton, and I think that I want to share a conversation that I had with my advisory group, and I witnessed it on Saturday. One of the responsibilities all of us have as schools, and there were several other school corporations represented at the surface on Saturday, because athletic teams are a much broader group, they probably do more collaborating than just about anybody else. But what I witnessed is, young kids really don't know how to deal with that, and don't really know, they're awkward, you know, I'm 15, 16, do I cry? What do I do? My advisory kids challenged us as a district, and we're working on that at the secondary level and the elementary level, is, we all know Peyton, and she was one of the basketball players, and we have positive images, but we lose kids a lot of times that maybe necessarily didn't have the kind of impact on the district that Peyton did. And so what my babies ask is, that we as a district kind of reexamine what we do, because we assume that sometimes by not talking about it, kids are going to have all these other kinds of supports. So we'll be talking to you about what that, the kids have given some suggestions, how do you honor? How do you talk about something as tragic as that accident and help kids kind of get through it? Lots of support in terms of counselors, every other high school, Chris, everyone did their best, but the sad part is, that's an everyday occurrence sometimes. And so I appreciate everybody's kind words. That's it for me.
And I just want to extend, you know, our thanks to you, Dr. Robinson. I don't know that everyone really appreciates how hard a loss like that is to our superintendent and to your staff, and I really do appreciate how hard it is for you, not taking, not intending to take anything away to the depth of the grief felt by the family and close friends, but it is felt all the way to the top of Fort Wayne Community School District, and we want you to know that we certainly appreciate that. You know, and I also, it just never ceases to amaze me, Dr. Robinson, and I really appreciated Chris Hemstall and Phil Downs taking to Twitter and to tweet and tweeting on some of the very basic components of this assessment issue, but, you know, people don't, they forget, well, or they don't know that, that each state's assessment is different. And so, I'll get comments, well, you know, down in Florida, my children were proficient, they weren't in Indiana, and they don't understand that, that every state has its own test. We get so, we become so accustomed to the level at which we discuss these things, that I think every once in a while, it's really important that we go back to Education 101, because people are busy in their daily lives, and they, they don't read the same things we read, and they don't live it day in and day out. So, you know, I hope that, that in the process of trying to come up with a standardized test, we, again, keep in mind that this has really taken away from the value of education across the Board. Glenna was one of the early champions in talking to different groups to get them off of this whole Common Core thing, and the extent to which it, it fed into the whole testing, and how much that takes away from our teachers' creativity in trying to get our young, our students and our young adults ready to take on the mantle of protecting this wonderful democracy of ours. And I, I just, I appreciate very much the time you're spending on this, but if you and your group could every once in a while just stop and say, okay, we're operating at a level that is so much more complex than the average person out there is ready to accept, and keep pushing some of the really basics of what this has done to education. I hear it from my sister from St. Louis, and now my daughter in Denver, educators across the country have just become so discouraged. And my sister Mary said, you know, what's really too bad for Mara is that she will never, she won't recall the day where we could actually do for students what was so important for them, because they're all just kind of now being brought into this high-stakes testing environment. So, so anyway, if you could just keep that in mind. I unfortunately will not be here on December 12th. I have a case pending down in Florida with a hearing in Jacksonville on Tuesday, the 13th, that I have to get to, and I also have a matter, a hearing pending out in Nevada in, on January 11th. So, so, and those, it looks to me, based on my calendar from Carrie, that I'm going to be pretty busy traveling the first six months, which is the reason, one of the reasons why I asked to not be re-elected as Board President for next year. So this will be my last official Board meeting, although I think we're going to need a special meeting in late December in which to present our superintendent's new contract, because we have to present that to the public, and we'd really like to try to get that done before the end of the year. So I'll probably preside over that meeting, but, but I just want to thank you all for being just a very, very special group of people. You know, we don't always agree, and that's a good thing. Group think is a horrible, horrible barrier to creative thought, and we're... Group think is a horrible, horrible barrier to creative thought, and we're not that group. On the other hand, we do know how to have crucial conversations, we do know how, I think for the most part, to understand where the other person is coming from, and more important than anything else, we understand that we have a mutual interest in ensuring that this district continues to operate at a high level and separates itself from other districts due to our belief in the points we talked about earlier, that every child here has, has something very special about them, and it's up to us to find it and to push them to that potential. And God love Dr. Robinson and her team because they live that every single day, and we as a board, I think, have been pretty darn instrumental in giving them the room they need to achieve the goals of the district. So I've enjoyed sitting at this spot on the dais over the last nine years. I've had a lot of fun, and not always, not always fun, sometimes a little frustrating, but for the most part, incredibly fulfilling. So thank you all for that and for your support and help over the years. With that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and we'll open up the microphone to members of the.
Move for adjournment?
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried, the microphone is open to anybody.